I saw it in the beginning, too. I did tell him.
It's me.
Yeah?
David's decision to no longer broadcast the video. But still, they have a little bit of the input wanted to be there. I'm just trying to make sure for that direction. Yeah, somehow change this. Change so. Can listen. I could maybe move this zoom to the camera. I'm gonna be here a little bit. It's good to change it. So that because this is the first that you can watch it. But I don't want to change that without changing the layout so that it's clear. That's not too much. I should get a camera like that.
Chris, are you ready? Chris, are you ready?
Yep, okay. Good evening and welcome, everyone, to this evening's study session, May ninth, 2022. I call this meeting to order. This evening's meeting is being held both virtually and in person. Sean, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Jay Raj.
I'm here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Let's go around and see if she comes in.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Mlanga.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Sean. Sean, do we have any announcements, reports, or presentations?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. Council, tonight's agenda item for our discussion begins with Director Tate's discussion item as Community Block Grant 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
Thank you, and I'll introduce Joyce Scott, Community Services Manager for this presentation.
Welcome, Joyce.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. Thank you so much for having me here this evening. My name is Joyce Scott. I'm the Community Services Manager here at Auburn, and I am here this evening to chat with you a little bit about our Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, which is our annual report submitted to HUD for the 2021 program year. I was originally scheduled to be before you at the last Community Wellness Special Focus Area, but given that you had three hours of agenda items on Jurassic Parliament training that evening, we moved it forward a little bit. So I'm coming to you a little bit later than I do in other years. So in the Community Services Division, we oversee a couple different pots of funding. In addition to our general fund human services dollars, we oversee the city's CDBG, Community Development Block Grant entitlement funds. And over the last couple of years, we've received funds from HUD that are an expansion of our Community Development Block Grant dollars in order to respond to the coronavirus pandemic in the community. So we have also been managing through those funds as well. This evening, we'll be talking about both the Community Development Block Grant regular or entitlement funds, as well as the Community Development Block Grant CV or coronavirus dollars. So as we discuss pretty regularly at this point, I think I'm before Council usually three or four times a year to talk about the Community Development Block Grant Program, though this is the first time in person for many council members, so it's nice to be here actually in front of you tonight. The entitlement program provides annual grants that are on a formula basis to entitled cities to develop viable urban communities. So once cities hit a population of 50,000, they have the opportunity to become an entitlement jurisdiction and receive funds directly from HUD. The formulas are based on things like poverty rate, population, age of housing stock, and some other factors, and determined by Congress annually as part of their budget process. So in order to use the funds to support projects in our community, we have to ensure that the projects align with HUD's national objectives, are eligible under HUD's guidelines, and also that they principally benefit low and moderate income community members. So this evening, we're talking about the CAPER, which is our Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. This is really just a progress report. It provides an overview of all of the progress that we've made in carrying out the service units and objectives under our five-year consolidated plan the previous year. So the report we're discussing this evening is for our 2021 program year. Our program year in Auburn luckily aligns with the calendar year, which makes it easy for us. Many jurisdictions have other program years that they work oftentimes starting in October or starting in July. So it makes it a little bit easier that it lines up with our budget year as well. This is a requirement of HUD in order to receive our annual entitlement, and it is also kind of crucial as we look to develop our following year's action plan and the next five-year strategic plan to see how we're doing on our goals, where we're at in our progress report. So there are a number of administrative requirements with the CDBG program, and HUD oversees all of these. For us, we work with our Region 10 HUD partners. We are part of the King County Consortium. In Auburn, there are a number of cities that are entitlement jurisdictions in King County, Bellevue, Federal Way, Kent, and Auburn partner with King County on our strategic planning processes, and we're currently under the 2020 to 2024 consolidated planning year. So as you look through our CAPER report, as you look at the percentages that are in the report of what percentage complete we are on our progress, we have completed two out of the five years. So really where we would expect to see is, you know, somewhere between 40 and 50%. As we'll see later on in the presentation, we actually have far exceeded the majority of our goals, primarily because of those additional funds that were made available to respond to the coronavirus pandemic. So we have a number of these administrative steps, and we oversee these pieces in-house with our staff, but we work very closely with our HUD program officers, with our community, Community Development HUD staff. And we actually, this report is due in March of every year. We have since submitted our report for this year, and it has been accepted and approved by HUD. There are a number of eligible types of activities for CDBG funds. One of the things that's good to think about as we look at these lists is also the amount of funding that we have available with these dollars, because some of these activities are better suited to entitlement jurisdictions that receive, you know, one, two, three million dollars a year, and some are better suited to jurisdictions that are operating with a smaller amount of funding. So we fall somewhat in the middle of our local entitlement jurisdictions. In King County, we receive around $650,000 annually. We have seen that increase certainly every year in the last five years since I've been at Auburn, and we've had a pretty significant increase. I believe it was closer to 480,000 when I started in 2017. So we can use these funds for home rehabilitation activities, for public services, although we can only use up to 15% of our allocation for that, for certain economic development activities, homeownership assistance, planning and capacity building, and acquisition of real property, as well as public facility ADA improvements. And I'll touch in just a moment on some of the things that we've been using these funds for within our jurisdiction. The CDBGCV, those coronavirus funds that we received, and that was just under a million dollars, it was about 913,000 that we received of those funds, were very different for us because, for the first time with HUD, they removed the public services cap. So for our regular funds, we typically can only use up to 15% to support public services, which really aligns with what we think of as human services or social services in the community. And Auburn has traditionally allocated the maximum that we can, just under that 15% to public services in the community. For these funds, they eliminated the cap so that we could use as much of them as the we wanted. And you might recall, those of you that were on the council at the time, we brought forward amendments in 2020, mid-year and at the end of the year, and allocated the vast majority of those funds to support public services in the community, which we'll go into in just a moment. One restriction of these funds was that all the services funded had to be directly related to COVID-19. And in some areas, that's a little bit more of an abstract concept. Obviously, food access was an issue for many people during the COVID pandemic, and one of the services that we funded was food access for seniors in low-income housing. And you can kind of make a case in a lot of different situations to support food access. But for things like eviction prevention, it required that folks receiving that assistance show that their reason for being behind in rent was directly a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. So that did play out in different ways, depending on the services that we funded. In 2021, we used our CDBG funds to support a number of different programs. We supported the city's Minor Housing Repair Program, which provides free home repairs for low-income homeowners in Auburn. We provided some funding to support a sidewalk ADA improvement on East Street, kind of in between Terminal Park Elementary and Lescove Park in a residential area there to add curb cuts supporting greater pedestrian accessibility and accessibility for folks with disabilities. We funded a housing stability rental assistance program to help support eviction prevention, and we also supported our internal costs for overseeing these funds. In 2020, one of the things that HUD also allowed us to do, which was new, was that we could reallocate unspent funds towards public services responding to COVID. So we could take some of our regular entitlement funds and put them towards coronavirus response without having any type of penalty or cap on public service dollars. It was a one-time waiver, and it only applied to funds being reallocated from the 2019 and 2020 program years. We had fully expended our 2019 funds at that time, but we freed up about $200,000 in funds from 2020 in order to immediately put out into the community for COVID response. And so that was an allocation, part of the action plan that Council approved in December of 2020. With those funds, we funded childcare services for folks impacted by the pandemic, the food access for seniors, which I mentioned, job training and education programs for folks who had job loss due to the pandemic, and also behavioral health services. Our coronavirus funds supported rental assistance and eviction prevention services in 2021, childcare services, career navigation, and previously in 2020, as I reported on last year, we had also put out many of those funds very quickly initially to support COVID testing and treatment for low-to-moderate-income Auburn residents through a partnership with Health Point. We had also funded rental assistance and eviction prevention with the first round of coronavirus response funds in mid-2020. In 2021, this is just a snapshot of what you'll see in more depth in the report, but just looking at the number of people served, we served 98 residents through the Housing Repair Program. That was across 52 households who received home repair services. 188 Auburn residents who were living in low-income housing were provided with food during the COVID restrictions, and that actually equals 15,730 meals that were delivered to King County Housing Authority low-income senior housing properties. Seventy young adults that were experiencing homelessness were provided with behavioral health services to support their mental health needs during the pandemic. Twelve Auburn residents that were impacted by COVID with job loss were provided with job training and placement services. We had 86 residents that benefited from childcare services in 2021, 268 Auburn residents receiving rent assistance that prevented eviction, and 1,335 Auburn residents benefited from the sidewalk ADA improvements. There are a number of details within the CAPER report that's attached to your packet this evening that cover more depth around individuals served, but I wanted to pull out just a couple of the key demographics. So this is a chart that's showing the income level of residents served in 2021. You'll see that while HUD has the requirement that we benefit principally low-to-moderate-income persons, and of course, this chart is only showing low-to-moderate-income people because we didn't provide services to anyone outside of that income range, Auburn has really chosen to prioritize programs that are serving extremely low-income households with these funds. So you'll see that 79% or 537 of the residents served were under 30% of area median income, which is living on an extremely low income. 15% or 101 of the residents were low-income residents in that 31% to 50% area median income range, and 6% or 38 residents were between 51% and 80% of the AMI. We also have a little bit more of a breakdown, clearer breakdown within the report, looking at each category broken down by number of individuals served, by race and ethnicity. And of course, this is HUD categories, so it does not always align with how people identify on their intake forms or with their caseworkers, but this is the information that we have through this report and that we are able to input into the database for our HUD reporting. So just to do a brief overview of some of the ways that these funds help to support work out in the community, I wanted to touch a little bit on the Housing Repair Program because it's one of the core programs that's funded by Community Development Block Grant dollars each year. As I mentioned, there were 98 residents served across 52 households. In those households, there were 20 children present. There were 20 children that received home improvements as part of this program and ended up in safer and more viable housing. Twenty-nine of those households were extremely low-income or under 30% of AMI, and 25 of them were in low-income households. There were 40 households that were aged 60-plus. So you see that in this data is reflected that a majority of the households that we serve are senior households, are female-headed households, and almost half are households where somebody with a disability is present. But we also wanted to reflect that there are a number of households that have children present as well, because we don't typically touch on that, because so many of the households served have seniors residing in them. But this program really serves a number of types of households and families across Auburn. And the average age of the homes that we work with is 44 years old in 2021. That varies a little bit year to year. This list kind of changes every year based on a number of factors, including things like what our average weather temperatures, extreme weather looked like during the year. But you'll see that the most common type of repair that we saw in 2021 was roof replacement or repair, followed by plumbing, gutter replacement or repairs, mold damage, skirting repairs, and then some various others in there. It really does change. We've had years where furnaces are the number-one request. We've had years where things like ADA ramps are the highest request that we receive. And part of what you'll see in 2021 is because for the first half of the year, we were under public health guidelines that kept us from doing interior repairs for the first portion of the year, that most of what you see here as the most popular are exterior repairs or extremely emergent interior repairs. So I wanted to share just a few before and afters that are indicative of the types of repairs that we do in this program, and you'll see some of them are quite small, like the example before you. And part of what we really try to do, in addition to responding to repairs that are urgent, situations where folks are really in crisis, we also want to respond to things before they become a crisis, and we want to help keep folks' homes safe and free of water intrusion, free of pest intrusion, and really intervene before there's a significant problem. So it can be as simple as, you know, supporting repairs to gutters and drainage so that water is flowing away from a property and not into a property. We also see a number of repairs for entry to the home, whether that's replacing stairs with a ramp so that folks who are experiencing limited mobility are still able to get in and out of their home safely. But oftentimes, is just repairing what is there and making it more safe for our residents. Sometimes, we do see homes that have had significant amount of water damage previously, that either have large mold issues or perhaps soft floors or holes in their floors. And we do really have a number of repairs that often come up, especially when we have more of an interior presence than we had in 2021 around repairing floors. It's one of the biggest things that we tend to see in this program over a five-year period. And as I mentioned, roof repair and replacement was our number-one project in 2021. So it doesn't have a huge impact of a before and after, but this is very often what we will see when we come up to a house that's called for home repair services, is that we'll see a roof that has been tarp'd. Sometimes, we come and the first thing that we do is tarp a roof to ensure that we can put a stop to immediate water intrusion while we are either getting bids or putting together the documents needed to be able to get the work done from internal staff. So just to give you a little bit of a timeline about 2022, what to expect with the Community Development Block Grant Program. As I mentioned, we submitted our paper in March, and it has been reviewed and accepted by HUD staff. We anticipate that we will be receiving our 2021, or I'm sorry, 2022 grant agreement this month. Hopefully, we will be receiving the award amount for this year, and we'll be able to execute that and move forward with our 2022 projects. And we'll start to do our public engagement process for our planning for 2023 in August of this year. So we will be before you again in October and November. There will be a couple of public hearings, as well as community meetings to get input on what to prioritize in our upcoming plan. So I ran through a lot of information there. I'm happy to take any questions if folks have questions about the report or the presentation.
Thank you, Joy. Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jay Raj. Great report. Thank you so much. Great report. Thank you so much. I appreciated the demographic breakdown for those that receive services. How does that compare to the demographic breakdown of our community at large? Do you have an idea of that?
Yeah, it's an excellent question. We tend to serve a greater proportion of people of color in this program than we see in our community at large. I can certainly follow up with a more detailed breakdown by specific category, but overall, this program tends to serve a much greater proportion of folks of color, low-income folks, people with disabilities, and seniors than we see reflected in the community demographics.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Council? Councilmember Bob Baggett.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Joy, just a quick question regarding the 188 people that we serve food to. Was that independently or was that in collaboration with the Auburn Food Bank?
So that was actually a partnership between the YMCA of Greater Seattle and King County Housing Authority. So it was separate from the work that the Food Bank was doing at the time, and it was partly to address the gap in home delivery, food, ready-made meals that we were seeing in 2021 especially and the end of 2020, when there was such a tax on those services.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Yolanda.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Joy, thank you for an awesome report. It's nice to see the way you broke it all down, and as we, Councilwoman Mlanga and I have mentioned, that we would like it all broken down so our council members could see who we serve and how many we serve. My question was, out of the 12 that you trained for jobs, did they find jobs to go to?
Yeah, so that was through a contract that we had with Orion Industries, and all of those 12 participants received both job training and job placement services with ongoing support to retain those jobs.
Okay. Thank you very much. Nice job.
Any other questions? Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you for your presentation. I was going to ask, with the CDBG COVID funds, it looks like there was a little bit of carryover, but that those were earmarked. What programs do we have that we're going to put that to for this year?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So one of the items that you may have noticed in our financial reports that were at the end of this was that we do have some of those carryover funds for both CDBG and CDBGCV. Part of that is because it was really an unprecedented amount of funds that we received in one year, and even with that, we were able to expend almost $1.3 million between the two fund sources in 2021, when our normal expenditures for an annual entitlement are around 650. So we were able to get the bulk of those funds out the door. One of the things that the report speaks to is that for the contracts that we executed starting in 2021 for those coronavirus response funds, agencies found that, depending on the type of service, they really needed some additional time to be able to fully expend them. So what we've done is we have provided contract amendments to those programs that still had funding available. One of the kind of key examples of that is that we made a large amount of funding available for eviction prevention, and as the King County Eviction Prevention and Rental Assistance Program, the EPREP program, came online, it caused some challenges with CDBG because we had to show that all other community-level funding sources were utilized before this funding source was utilized. So it kind of put a pause on those dollars. But all of our current coronavirus dollars are on track to be fully expended by the end of June of this year.
Any other questions, Council? Joy, thank you very much for your presentation. Council, our final two discussion items for this evening will be chaired by Councilmember Sterns. First will be on ordinance number 6864, and second will be on the 2023 to 2028 Transportation Improvement Program Annual Update and 2023 Transportation Impact Fee Update.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I don't have too much to do other than to welcome our Director Gob for her presentation. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. So for the record, Public Works Director Inger Gob. For the ordinance 6864, this is a really quick one. So back in early 2020, when the pandemic was first starting, the council took some action to waive the late fees that we had on our utility accounts and our airport accounts to assist with the potential impacts from the pandemic for the community. As we went through the pandemic, the governor's actions actually rescinded the late fees waiver for the utility accounts in September of 2021, but that did not affect the airport accounts. So the action before you tonight or next Monday for ordinance 6864 is to rescind the waiver that is on the actual airport accounts so that we will actually begin so that we will actually begin charging late fees for any tenants that don't pay their fees on time beginning in June of 2022. So that is the quick summary of the action. Any questions?
Do we have any questions? Yes, counsel member Trout Manuel.
What was the date that is going to start again? I quite didn't hear. Oh, I just, what was the date that you said is going to start charging?
Yeah, so the date that we would actually start charging would be after June 15th. So it basically would go back into effect June 1st. So anybody that has payments due June 1st, they have until June 15th to pay those before we would actually assess a late fee. So anybody that pays by that June 15th timeframe would be fine. Anybody after that would have a late fee assessed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to the meatier item, transportation.
And I'm going to introduce James Webb, who is our senior traffic engineer, who is going to give you that presentation. I'll let you start then.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. For the record, James Webb, Senior Traffic Engineer of the city. And I'm here this evening to present our annual update to the Transportation Improvement Program that will cover the period from 2023 to 2028. So the tip is something that we are required to prepare by the RCWs. It is a six-year short-range transportation plan and it is required to be financially constrained. So we can only program funds in the tip that we reasonably anticipate to collect. The exception to that is our Traffic Impact Fee Fund, where we are allowed to overprogram to a certain extent. The purpose of the tip, how we use it, is to identify project priorities, to program those funds, to... It's a requirement on the grant applications that we submit. We use it to set our traffic impact fees for the following year, so the first year that is covered by that six-year period. We use it to coordinate with our public utilities and on private development projects. And it is used to feed into the capital facilities plan and the budget. Sorry, that was, it was hidden at the bottom of the screen. I was, couldn't find it. So per the RCW, we are required to update the tip by the end of June each calendar year. We are required to go through a public hearing process. We do take the tip to the Transportation Advisory Board for their discussion and feedback. Once the tip has been adopted, we will make modifications through the year as needed. That again requires a public hearing and approval by city council. The main things we accomplish during the annual update are to remove projects that have either been completed or don't reflect our current priorities and needs. We add new projects based on grant applications that we're in the process of submitting and to respond to new emerging needs. And we will modify the projects that are in the tip as carryover projects. We'll make changes to project descriptions, funding sources, those kinds of things. So as part of this update, there are three projects that are proposed to be removed. One is a project that was included to collect sidewalk and ADA data throughout the city. That was, the previous tip project identified that being done through a consultant contract. We have made the decision that that is something that we will be able to conduct internally now using city staff. There is a Stewart Road project that is a City of Pacific project, not a City of Auburn project, where we had entered into an agreement to provide the City of Pacific with some funding to help fully fund that project and show our partnership on that. That payment is scheduled to be made by the end of this year, so that will also be removed from the tip. And then there is an environmental monitoring project that was part of the A Street Northwest Phase 1 project that was completed a number of years ago. That environmental monitoring period is now complete, so that project has again been removed from the tip. Right now, we are in the midst of a number of various grant programs for 2022. The first on the list and by far the largest of them all is the PSRC Competition for Federal Funds, which is broken down into a regional competition where we have an application and then King and Pierce County-wide competitions where we have multiple applications submitted to King County. There's a WashDOT program that's the Highway Safety Infrastructure Program, which is safety projects that we submitted an application for. WashDOT also has Safe Routes to Schools and Non-Motorized Programs that we're currently working on applications for. Transportation Improvement Board will have a competition that will be starting soonish with applications due in August. And then there are a number of other federal competitions that we are currently tracking. So this summarizes the new projects that are being added to the tip in response to those grant applications. There's a number of them. It's an assortment of intersection improvements, non-motorized improvements, and a couple of preservation projects. So those are the projects that we currently identify. As I said, there are more grant competitions that are coming online. So as we understand the criteria for those competitions, we'll be looking at the projects that are in the tip and seeing what would be a competitive project for those competitions or identifying new projects that we would then add to the tip and submit for that grant funding. In addition to the projects that are being added to be considered for grant funding, there are a number of other projects that we're adding. There's a couple of APRA projects based on the additional APRA funds that we've received. One is to expand or to add new street lighting in neighborhoods that are eligible for that funding. The other is a contribution towards the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. There are two new preservation projects that are coming out of the preservation programs that we have. One is an arterial preservation project, which is from the 105 Fund that is proposed to utilize new funding sources identified through the TBD. And the other is a local street preservation fund program funded from the 103 Fund. There are two additional non-motorized programs, which again are coming out of our programs. One is an arterial pedestrian and bike safety project and the other is a 2022 sidewalk and ADA improvement project. And then we also have an additional lighting project that's an emerging need that would be to convert some of the downtown decorative LED lights, oh, sorry. Would convert some of the downtown decorative lights to LED. So this, I'll go through some of the highlights of the projects that we're adding. These are predominantly the, some of the grant applications that we're pursuing. So the first is a new roundabout at the Lee Hill Road, 104th Avenue Southeast intersection. So this is at the bottom of Lee Hill Road, just after you cross the bridge over the Green River. The project would replace the existing span wire signal with a new roundabout. This is an improvement that was identified in the Lee Hill Road corridor study. It's, will improve safety, traffic operations at the intersection and provide some new facilities for non-motorized users. This is one of the PSRC federal applications that we've submitted in 2022. We will find out whether we were successful or not on this application in the next one to two months. The second is a new non-motorized project. This would rechanalize 10th Street Northeast-Northwest. So this is up just north of the Fred Meyer. It would take the existing four-lane cross-section and rechanalize the roadway into a three-lane cross-section with on-street bike lanes. We would add a new mid-block crossing to the east of A Street Northeast that would have a median island and a rapid rectangular flashing beacon, so it would be pedestrian-activated. The project also includes the rest, the replacement of the existing pavement between A Street, or sorry, B Street Northwest and Auburn Way North. And again, this was a federal application that was submitted earlier this spring. Next up is another non-motorized project. This is located in our Regional Growth Center and is actually just across the street from City Hall. The project would take the A Street and First Street Northwest intersection and the Division Street and First Street Northeast-Northwest intersection and create raised intersections. We would also add the missing curb bulbs at both those intersections, include some lighting improvements as well. The project will improve safety and access across those intersections for non-motorized users. And again, that was a project that we submitted for earlier this year for federal grant funding. Next is another non-motorized program, project. This would complete a gap in the existing sidewalk system on 37th Street Southeast. This is proposed to be submitted to WashDOT as a Safe Routes to Schools application. We would also replace ADA ramps and upgrade the street lighting. So this is an application that we're currently working on. This would extend existing sidewalks from M Street Southeast and connect to the existing trail that extends east to R Street. So what does this mean? For our 2023 Traffic Impact Fee, we are proposing a 7% increase. That is the same as the increase that we needed to accomplish in 2021 to cover our traffic impact fee costs for 2022 and beyond. That increase would increase the fee from just over $5,200 per trip to just about $6,000 per trip. The increase in funding is needed to accommodate growth trips that we see through the life of the tip, so the next six-year period, and to keep the traffic impact fee financially constrained through the end of the six-year period. So at the end of 2028, we would still have a positive traffic impact fee fund balance. Based on the suite of projects that are proposed to be included in the tip that would use traffic impact fee funding for that six-year period, we would need a total of $17.4 million. So that is a total expenditure of $27 million over the six years, less the existing fund balance. And that funding need is spread across 20, just over 2,600 trips, new trips that are anticipated to be generated by new development during that six-year period. From this point forwards, this summarizes our process to get this through adoption by the end of June. We'll be taking it back to the Transportation Advisory Board tomorrow night. Following their review and feedback, we will be finalizing the tip. And then we have the public hearing, a second presentation to city council if needed, and then the hearing and adoption towards the end of June. The Traffic Impact Fee update will be completed in the fall as part of the overall city fee schedule update. And that's all I have for the formal presentation. Welcome. Any questions?
Thank you very much. That's excellent. Do we have any questions? Counsel member Baldwin.
Thank you. Counsel member Sterns. As the rookie in the room, I was going to ask if you could give me some additional guidance about the per-trip fee. So what, what does the city consider a trip? And you said it's based off of new development that's expected. So from a criteria, when does it count as that?
So any, pretty much any new development will generate new trips onto the city's street system. So to cover the general needs to add capacity to our street system throughout the city, we charge that per-trip fee. The only exception to that is if you have an existing development on a property that you are removing and replacing with something new or bigger or different, a different land use, we would then give you credit for the trips from that existing use that you're removing and only charge you based on the delta. And then, so we, we take the, we, in the fee schedule, we take the per-trip fee and we actually use industry-standard data to convert that into a fee for a whole bunch of different land uses. So we, we know that a single-family residence generates, it's pretty close to one trip, but then we make some adjustments based on trip length and some other things to come up with a fee for a single-family residence rather than a per-trip fee. Similarly, for commercial development, we look at the trip generation rate and we basically back it into a fee per square foot for, say, a warehouse facility or a grocery store. And that's how we take that per-trip fee and turn it into the fee schedule that you'll see later in the year.
Thank you.
Counsel member Trout Manuel.
Thank you, counsel member Sterns. Yes, I, I was wondering, at one point, we talked about sidewalks down River, River Road. Did we take that off the tip?
No, I believe, so that, that project on Riverwalk was one that we did get grant funding from WashDOT back in 2021. We were awarded a grant from WashDOT for $635,000. So this project is currently in design. It is scheduled to go to construction in 2023, so next year. And that is still included in the tip. It is project N9 and it's on page 113 in your packet.
Okay, I didn't see that, so that's why I'm asking a question. And is that going to replace, is that going to put lights, LED lights along there as well?
Yes, that does include adding lighting along that section of roadway. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And I have one more question, but I'll wait. Do, ask, okay. When was the last time we raised our impact fees?
We raised them, they would have gone into effect on the 1st of January this year.
Of this year?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So that, I mean, that's something that we, I mean, it's based on the projects that we include in the tip and it's based on the amount of traffic impact fee funding that we program to get those projects done in that six-year period. So this proposed update shows that there's a slightly increased need compared to the tip that was adopted last year. So to cover that need, we're, we need to rec, to propose a 7% increase in the traffic impact fees to be able to match the need in the tip.
And is that because we added these other roads?
It's part of it. It's partly that we've added additional projects. It's also partly because generally, costs are going up significantly. So some of the changes inherent to reflect those cost increases that we foresee. So part of that increase is to help cover those increased costs.
Thank you. That answered my question.
Counsel member Baldwin.
Thank you, counsel member Sterns. One last question. I was curious with the one grant request for the N5 Regional Growth Center Pedestrian Improvements, are there any dependencies or contingencies on that proposed project with the Sound Transit Future Parking Garage? Are they from a, receiving the grant or trying to maybe build in the same space at the same time?
So the, I mean, this is something that we're trying to accomplish separately from the Sound- the Sound Transit Parking Garage, but obviously recognizing that it, it's coming at some point and that there will be an increase in pedestrian traffic associated with it. The funding for the current program is 2025 and 2026 money.
Okay.
I believe this is programmed for 2026 for construction. Yeah, it is because we have, we've also requested that they provide us with some design funds through the grant program. So this is on page 109 in your packet. I mean, it, it's possible that some of these improvements would overlap with things that Sound Transit would be expected to build as part of the second parking garage construction. I mean, there's no guarantee that we're going to get this grant funding, unfortunately.
Sure.
And at this point, the, the timing for the Sound Transit garage seems to be a bit of a moving target right now. So it, it's hard to say if there would be some conflict. We work with Sound Transit, we will be working with Sound Transit closely on the garage project, so through that design process and our design process, we'll be able to work out any conflicts and figure out how to make this all work together.
Okay. Because, yeah, when I had looked at that, it certainly looked like the projects were intended to be complementary to each other with making sure that as folks are trying to use the garage, they can get there, have, you know, good lighting and safety. But I know, I think they're going into their public discussion period this week and next around the parking garage, so I know we're, anyway, I was just curious if there was anything about us going first or they go first from a timing perspective?
No, I think based on how far out we're looking right now with '25 and '26 and not knowing exactly when this, when the parking garage is going to be built, it, it's a bit hard to establish that right now, but we'll, we'll track both of those things and be working together on those.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Just one, one quick question. Just south of here in Division Street, we had talked, or was my understanding that there was going to be a connector built between Division Street and A Street Southeast? And, and I didn't see that on here.
So that is the A Street Loop project.
Okay.
So that should be in the R section of the projects. And again, that's a project that we were successful in receiving grant funding for, from PSRC back in 2021. So that's on page 135 in your packet. It's Project R4.
Great, thank you. That's what I was looking for.
And, and again, that's a project that we're currently working on the design phase of. We're starting to think about right-of-way acquisition, and that's anticipated to be constructed next year.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. The Deputy Mayor.
James, thank you very much for your presentation. My question has to do with sidewalk and ADA inventory. When do you guys plan on starting that and finishing that?
So in the previous TIP that was programmed for 2023, given that we've moved this in-house, it will probably take us a little bit longer to accomplish that. But I think we will be starting that next year, whether we are able to complete it all in a year or not, I don't know right now. It will depend on resourcing and other priorities.
One other question. My question has to do with, with the ADA especially. How would you prioritize which areas need to be done first?
So we have our ADA Transition Plan, and the ADA Transition Plan includes kind of a set of evaluation criteria that we would be looking at to prioritize what we would do first. I mean, the, the project that we're talking about, the, the data collection, is really just an evaluation of what our existing facilities look like and where we see gaps and things that don't meet standards. Once we have all of that information, then we'll be looking at programming those improvements through our programs that are in the TIP. So those will be part of future annual projects that would be prioritized based on those criteria in the, in that plan. And then we'd also be looking at grant opportunities to help fund those types of improvements to, to accelerate that.
Thank you, James.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Councilmember Sterns, thank you. James, the roundabout that you're going to be doing here on A Street, is that similar to the one that we're going to, you're going to do on 164?
Did you say roundabout on A Street?
Is it a roundabout?
No, we're not proposing a roundabout on A Street right now.
James, she's talking about the one on 104th.
Oh, okay, sorry. Lee Hill Road?
Yeah, Lee Hill, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Similar to the one on Auburn Way South? There are similarities, yes. I mean, the, the one on Auburn Way South is two lanes in each direction on SR 164 with, you know, the, the school driveway and the mobile home park driveway would just be single-lane approaches. So the, the slide shows kind of our conceptual layout for this. So to the west of the roundabout, you would have two lanes in each direction for a short distance until we narrow down to go across the bridge. You'd have two southbound lanes close to the roundabout, but it would only be a two-lane roadway still once you get further north. And then at least for the short term, going up Lee Hill Road, we'd go back to a two-lane section as you leave the roundabout. And I mean, based, based on our analysis, that's what we need to provide the capacity that we need for this to function through 2040.
Okay. Yeah, I see that now that I'm looking up closer. Okay, thanks.
Any further questions? Oh, well, thank you, Mr. Webb, for such an excellent presentation and for answering all of our questions.
Thank you.
All right, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sterns. Council, we have come to the end of our council study session. The meeting is now adjourned.